Six o'clock. Everybody strapped in, ready to go?
Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's nice to see everybody this evening. A lot of folks here. Welcome, ladies. It's nice to see you. Sure, it's not, we're not used to seeing you out there. So, I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your electronic devices, and that goes for us, too. That does happen. And if you would, please stand and join me in the invocation pledge. Lord, as we gather here tonight, we are reminded of all we have to be grateful for. We remember and pray for those around the world who are less fortunate than us, especially those in Ukraine and other areas plagued by war and hunger. Help us to keep perspective and remember that our challenges here in Temple Terrace involve how to best enhance our quality of life, while in many communities around the world, people are struggling just to survive the day. We ask for your guidance and wisdom to make sound decisions tonight. Help us listen to one another with open minds and unwavering commitment to the common good of all. Amen.
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, those of you are probably familiar that we've begun a practice of having a Temple Terrace fun fact at the beginning of our meetings. That was Councilmember Fernandez's idea, and it's been a lot of fun so far. I think it's a great idea. So, tonight, we're going to combine that with our first proclamation, because the receiver of our first proclamation is also the chairwoman of our Centennial Celebration Committee and is going to give the fun fact. So, I will give her a proclamation, and then she'll accept the proclamation, and then she will proceed with the fun fact. And I hope it's fun. So, Ms. Gaskins, would you like to approach the podium, please? No, you have to listen first.
Okay.
So, on behalf of the City Council, I'd like to issue this proclamation to you. And it says, "Whereas the U.S. Congress proclaimed the month of March as Women's History Month in 1987 and has proclaimed the observance each year since. Whereas, the special appeal to the area of Florida that was to become Temple Terrace was first recognized and capitalized on by Bertha Palmer, an astute businesswoman who focused many efforts on elevating the status of women. And whereas, the development plan for Temple Terrace was also greatly influenced by Maude Fowler, another strong-minded businesswoman. And whereas, women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our city, state, and country in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas, women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere in the life of Temple Terrace and beyond. Now therefore, I, Andy Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Women's History Month." Would you like to say a few words about the proclamation?
And I'd like for the ladies who are invited to join me to come up-
That's a great idea.
Yes, because, you know, this is all about women in leadership, and we can talk about the women in the past, and we can talk about the women in the present, and hopefully we can have women in the future as well, who will provide leadership to this community. I'm very happy, thank you for having me here, to accept this proclamation on behalf of such great people as Bertha and Maude, and then as going through the years, people like Mrs. McCartney, who started our garden club, and Fran Barford, a lady mayor. By the way, Maude Fowler was our first vice mayor. We were a very forward-thinking city to have a female mayor in 1924, 1925. If I had to present a fun fact tonight, what it would probably be about is that I had the rare opportunity, along with the rest of my Centennial Committee last Thursday night, to have the ladies from the library bring us the archival materials from the first City Hall records. And I got to see Bertha Palmer's will and testament. It's a very long will and testament. She had a lot of stuff to dispose of. Among the stuff she had to dispose of was 19,000 acres in Hillsborough County, and specifically, her beloved River Hills Ranch, which is a reference to Temple Terrace, before it was Temple Terrace, and who she gave it to and how she gave it to them. It's very interesting. I also had the opportunity, in the same documents, to see a petition from Maude Fowler to a judge in Duval County, because remember, Maude came to Temple Terrace from Jacksonville. And in that petition, she was asking to be set free, to be allowed to, it wasn't a divorce dissolution document, it didn't have that word in it, or any of those words, but she wanted her freedom to manage her own finances, and she needed permission from a judge to do that. And didn't she manage them well? She became the real estate queen of Tampa, because of all the money she made out here in Temple Terrace, and the leadership that she provided, both through herself and her only son, Cody Fowler. So, that was very eye-opening for me to see, and I'm looking forward to spending many more hours in those archival documents from City Hall. I'm not allowed to touch them. They're going to digitize them over time. The library has a very ambitious plan, and we're very excited about that. But I brought some of these women who provide the leadership today for our community, and I don't want to forget people like Jo Jeter, Ann Simmons, Linda Chaddles. These are all women, over the years, who've given a lot to this community. Marge Shine with the Woodmott Association. All of us know a woman in every decade that provided outstanding leadership in Temple Terrace, and that, I'm sure, will continue, and I do appreciate the proclamation, and I'm so happy to receive it for all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Gaskins. And I'd like to invite all the ladies in the room to please gather up here. You all are part of Temple Terrace history, too. So, everybody gather up here.
Go gather.
I gotta get over here to give you this, though. All right. Listen to Lori, she's the official governor. We have more coming. Come on up. There we go.
You're gonna have to squeeze in.
We're gonna have to squash in.
And you're gonna have to-
Where am I going?
Just hide from the camera.
Lucky you, Andy.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Talk about a four and a dozen roses. See, there's so few benefits to being mayor, but that was cool. So, next, I'd like to ask Director Langfield from our Leisure Services Department to please approach. Welcome, Mr. Langfield. So, our next proclamation concerns Bicycle Safety Month. And so, "Whereas, for more than a century, the bicycle has been a utilitarian, economical, environmentally sound, and effective means of personal transportation, recreation, and fitness. And whereas, the city of Temple Terrace encourages the use of bicycles as a means of transportation and recognizes bicyclists as legitimate roadway users. And whereas, the city of Temple Terrace encourages the increased use of bicycles benefiting all citizens by improving air quality, reducing traffic congestion and noise, decreasing the use of and dependence upon finite energy sources, and fostering exercise. And whereas, the city of Temple Terrace promotes safe and responsible bicycling and is committed to incorporating the development of bicycle facilities in the vision for revitalization of the city. Now therefore, I, Andy Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Bike Month." So, Mr. Langfield, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I'm honored to receive this proclamation from you tonight. Temple Terrace, I feel, has a, has a very strong commitment to maintaining bicycling and safe bicycling in the community. You see that in, in many, in many different ways. On our roadways, there are many areas that have bicycle safety lanes marked on them. The newly resurfaced 53rd Street, just out here behind City Hall, was recently marked with, with bicycle lanes on them to, to alert drivers that there will be cyclists present. City facilities around, around town have bicycle maintenance stations at them, including the family complex, the Lightfoot Center, and the library. Just recently, we, we completed the off-road bicycle trails at Riverfront Preserve, which is a purely recreational form of bicycling, kind of disconnected from the transportation aspect of it. But bicycling is always, is always a valuable mode of transportation, transportation around town. Kids are bicycling back and forth to school, so please, when you're riding, driving around town in the mornings, be alert for those cyclists. This, not this Friday, March 17th, Friday morning, March 17th, is our annual Bike With the Mayor event at the family complex from 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., with the bike ride starting at 8:00. I would encourage everybody to come out and attend and have a bike ride around the community to bring awareness to bicycling and bicycle safety in, within the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langfield. Arbrist, Mr. Ferris. One more.
Good evening, Joe. How are you? Good. Thanks for being here tonight. "Whereas, in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. This holiday, now called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska." I wonder if they're still there. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lowering heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business area, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, unless you're cleaning your gutters, right? Now therefore, I, Andy Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, do hereby set aside March 12th, 2023, as Temple Terrace Arbor Day. For those of you who may not know, Mr. Ferris is our city arbrist, so he's the appropriate one to receive this. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. This Sunday, the 12th, I'll be giving trees away again at the garden, through the garden club at the Spring Market. I believe this is the fourth year I've participated with this organization and their event. Got a load of trees coming, quite a few, so they'll be ample for any resident of the city to get a tree. As I've done in the past, if I'm out of a particular tree, or there's a species that I don't have, they're looking for, if it's readily available, I'll get information that can order it, and I'll get those within a couple of weeks to them. Just a little extra tidbit, last year, from that giveaway to current, not including this year's numbers, I was able to give away 453 trees that went out to the city, both residential and city property. So, it's been a really good program.
Very good. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
We'll look at Lori first, and then we'll look at Mike. And we will have a good picture of Lori. Okay, then we'll look at Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation from the Arts Council for the annual Art En Blanc, and Nancy Hudson is here as the chair, I believe it's chair, right, of the Arts Council?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome. You serve, you have so many hats, I don't remember which one you're wearing tonight.
Today is white, so it's Art en Blanc.
Okay.
So, there you go. Thank you very much, Mayor Ross and council members. We do have some slides to share with some photos. I just wanted to share some information about Art en Blanc, the Art Council's major fundraiser. On March 25th, the 10th Annual Art en Blanc will take place at Woodmott Park from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. This is one of the premier events in Temple Terrace and is so important to the Arts Council. It is the major fundraiser for the council. It does help us fund the festival that happens in the fall, and it helps us fund many of the projects that we do throughout the community. We're a very small council, but we're a very mighty council. We do a lot of different things in the community, so this really does help us. This is our major fundraiser. This is a community dinner that has something for everyone. The council provides the tables, the entertainment, the atmosphere, and the guests provide their own food. We dress all in white and help create the party of the year at Woodmott Park. This year, we have an outstanding DJ. We have additional entertainment from Busch Gardens. We have onsite painting by local artist Terry Claren and professional photography by Pamela. We also have amazing auction items, including our wine, which we always have, and we have club seats for a lightning game, we have art available, we have photography available, we'll have a golf outing, and much more. There is even awards for the table decorations, including Most Creative, Most Temple Terrace, and the Best Overall. We would love all of your support this year for our 10th anniversary, and we hope that you all can come to the event. The tickets are available on Eventbrite.com, and we have tables of eight or 10, or you can buy an individual ticket as well. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to share a little bit more about our event, and I would answer any questions that you guys might have about Art en Blanc this year. I hope you all will come.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudson. Council members, questions? You gonna be there?
Yes, sir.
I had a feeling.
I have my table, even though there's not a category for Star Trek-related centerpieces.
It could be Best Overall, it could be Most Creative.
I haven't won yet, but that's okay.
No, no taken, James. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is an appointment to the Riverwatch Task Force. There is one vacancy on the Riverwatch Task Force for the expired term of Carol Dell, who served for a long time on that board. City received one application from Kobe O'Brien, who's currently an alternate member. Is Mr. O'Brien here? Nope? Okay. Is there a motion to approve Mr. O'Brien as a regular member of the Riverwatch Task Force?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. O'Brien is appointed to the Riverwatch Task Force. Council members, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of our meeting from February the 21st? If so, is there a motion?
Move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
Any corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose a nay sign. Minutes are adopted. Next, are persons wishing to address the council on items not on the agenda or items on the consent agenda? There is a three-minute time limit imposed on all members of the public. We do ask that you approach the podium and state your name and city of residence. I have two requests to speak currently. If anybody would like to address the council, there are forms in the back of the room to fill out and provide them with, to the city clerk, and you will be added to the list. The first request I have is from Mr. Jay Courtwright. Ms. Jay Courtwright, I'm sorry. Well, I apologize. Welcome.
I'm Jay Courtwright. I live at 8022 Bryan Green Way in a community off 78th Street, and I'm here tonight to request that the city of Temple Terrace create new sidewalks, there are none existing there now, along 78th Street between Harney Road and Temple Terrace Highway, a distance of about half a mile. There are a number of residential communities along that half-mile stretch of 78th, as well as a church, a childcare center, and a couple of single-family residences. There are sidewalks within these private communities, but not on the sidewalks along, but not along the street, on 78th Street. ADA-compliant sidewalks would provide a safe path for all non-vehicular travelers along 78th Street. People using walkers, wheelchairs, scooters, canes, those who have visual handicaps would be able to travel safely along 78th Street on the sidewalks. Without sidewalks, those people need to have somebody give them a ride, or some of them, I've seen them venture out onto the 35 mile an hour road and take their chances. Both heart buses and school buses travel and stop along 78th Street, and unless you're able-bodied, there is really no place to walk safely. You go in the street. Sidewalks, to me, are not a luxury. They provide safe paths for everyone in the community, young and old, able-bodied, disabled, dog walkers, people with strollers, et cetera. And based on news reports that I've read, Tampa Bay is one of the least safe places in the whole United States for pedestrians and bicyclists. It seems that that's a call to improve safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, wheelchair users, and others for whom sidewalks are both an essential lifesaving safety feature and also a social connection to the community that we all live in. Sidewalks are a sign of respect. Sidewalks are just one of the ways along the trees, sign ordinances, parks, water bodies, that a, that a city shows that it's proud of its infrastructure, proud that it protects its residents, proud that its streets are welcoming and safe for all, not just for cars and other motorized vehicles. I hope Temple Terrace will lead the way to a safer city with ADA-compliant sidewalks for safe walking. In time, to celebrate, I noticed, our upcoming 100th centennial of our amazing city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Courtwright. So, I have your email address here.
Yes, I think so.
So, we will, yeah, you put it on the form, so we will, somebody will be either, either myself or the city manager, or somebody from staff, will, will be in touch with you via email.
And I have spoken with Brian Carson, too.
Okay. All right. All right, we'll follow up. We'll follow up. Next speaker is Ms. Tumbelson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jan Tumbelson, the city of Temple Terrace. I have given all of y'all a bicycle book from the FDOT today that I picked up. There are no bicycle information at Lightfoot or the Recreation Center. I will be happy to go back to the FDOT and get brochures about not only pedestrians, but bicyclists. Okay. My, we are designated as a multi-modular city and the first in Florida. We need to, we're so active with USF and other things. We missed the deadline, which was February 1st, to apply for FDOT grants. Okay. I'm sure all my emails have been flying over the past week, and I appreciate, I did not realize that, even though I had seen the agenda, excuse me, that this was Bike Month. But I would like for brochures to be put at the library, if possible, and if the city manager will allow it. I want them at the Recreation Center. I want them at the library, where a lot of kids go, and any other place in the city that y'all can think about. FDOT will be helpful regarding all brochures. I have sent a web, all you have to do, go to floridafdot.com, and you get all the contact information and what brochures are available. I thank you for your time. May I give this to Carl?
I have one.
No, I've got a bunch. No, I got a bunch.
I would like these placed also in City Hall, the library, Recreation Center, and Lightfoot.
Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to present the consent agenda.
Second.
I think the vice mayor beat you to it. The motion and a second, is there discussion on the consent? Well, never mind. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no nays, the consent agenda is approved. Next item is a resolution approving site plan review application, SPR 22-05, for the construction of a 38,744-square-foot warehouse facility at 8901 Maislin Drive. Senior Planner Gus Carpus is here to explain. Welcome, Gus.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Let's make sure I got my stuff here, just to reiterate what the mayor said. Tonight you have before you is a resolution to approve a site plan review application for the construction of a 38,744-square-foot warehouse facility located at 8901 Maislin Drive. The owner is RCP America Incorporated, and the applicant is Richard Diaz Jr. They're both here tonight. So, the location is at 1.97 acres of vacant property, lying south of Maislin Drive and east of Professional Place. Again, the address is 8901 Maislin Drive. Current zoning is light industrial. Future land use is also industrial. The proposal is, again, for the 38,744-square-foot warehouse facility. The structure will have an L-shaped type footprint with a north-south length of about 256 linear feet, maximum east-west, east-west depth, that was easy, of approximately 181 feet. They're proposing 49 onsite parking spaces with, including two handicap-accessible spaces along the north and west sides of the structure. And there will be two access points to the site, one on Maislin Drive on the north, and one from Professional Place on the east. Okay. So, the elevation of the structure is 28 foot, 28 foot, 4 inches. It's just a basic building that you have in our industrial area. I think the applicants speak a little bit more of the exterior materials, and I believe it is one-story, but it's gonna have a catwalk, I think that's the correct word, second story, so it's not a full second story. They're also proposing a monument sign, 36-square-foot monument sign. What I did want to say, RCP is in the business of making soaps and other cleaning supplies for automobiles, and they are currently located within the district, and I think I actually caught them on my aerial, and I forget how to do the pointer on this. Well, I'm trying to get that laser. Okay. So, if you go north- Okay, so if you go northeast, the smaller building up northeast across the street, there's a smaller building up there. That's where they're currently located, a 12,000-square-foot structure. What they're doing, that's in unincorporated Hillsborough County, they are moving into the city. So they will be building this and then relocating into the city. I'm sorry, I don't know how to use the pointer. Should have probably learned that. So staff did recommend that the city council adopt a resolution approving site plan review application for the approval of the 38,744-square-foot warehouse facility as shown on the site plan to the city and included in Exhibit A on the resolution, subject to the payment of the required mobility fee as determined by the city engineer. Again, the applicant is here to answer any questions, but staff does recommend approval. This has went through the DRC and approved by them.
Thank you. Mr. Carpus, does the applicant wish to make any statements or presentations?
Sure.
It's optional. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Ross and city council. My name is Richard Diaz. I'm the applicant, I'm an agent for RCP America. They do intend to build a warehouse and move their facility, they're expanding. We appreciate the opportunity to work with staff and, you know, be a part of the community. It's been a while, we've had some challenges, delays with the market, but we're looking forward to a successful building, and we look forward to it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Very good, thank you. Well, we'll have public comment first, but then you'll have an opportunity to provide any follow-up from that.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay. Council members, are there questions for Mr. Carpus or the applicant? Councilmember Abel.
So from the aerial, it didn't look like there was any tree covering on the existing lot, is that's correct?
It's just a barren grass lot.
Well, that simplifies things, doesn't it?
Yep.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Councilmember Schisler.
Were there any restrictions that you were, or exclusions that we needed to hit for this?
They complied with all the setbacks, all the impervious surface, so there was nothing. I did work with the fire a little bit to make sure they had two fire exits from the site. They're not having any docking bays or anything like that, so they were pretty much within all the ordinance requirements.
And this will all be utilized for their general purposes? It's not, we're going to lease out part of it to other people?
My understanding is RCP is expanding their existing business and moving it all within there, there's not going to be subletting.
Thank you.
Members?
I do.
No, councilmember.
It's, just to make sure it's on the record, that this use is consistent with all of the use that it is, that that's zoned for, and that the buildings around it are being utilized for, and in terms of road traffic, it can handle whatever the parking and the traffic is going to be.
Correct, and that's what the mobility fee is for. Again, the roads here are county roads, they're not city roads, unfortunately, so, but we do do the traffic count through the engineer, and they have to submit that information.
And everything's consistent?
Correct. And the use is permitted within the ordinance.
Could I have one quick follow-up question?
Sure.
How much is the mobility fee?
Right now, it's $72,900.
The reason I ask that question is that, you know, we all need to, you know, we all pay a lot of, we pay taxes, okay? But a lot of people don't realize that businesses have other things that they got to pay within the city, and that's a fair amount of money, a fair chunk of change, so just wanted to get that amount on the record, that's all.
Oh, and I would put it on the record that fee's payable before we issue building permits, so.
The contribution to the city is significant. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmembers, is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution approving site plan review application SPR 22-05 for the construction of a 38,744-foot warehouse facility at 8901 Maislin Drive.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. No nays, resolution is adopted, the site plan is approved. You are not just moving out, you are moving up. So welcome to Temple Terrace, and we're very happy to have you in the city.
On behalf of RCP America, I just want to thank you for the opportunity. I formerly worked for Discount Auto Parts Advance in the real estate, and I, it's always a pleasure to come to these meetings, and I welcome and thank you, City of Temple Terrace, for accepting us.
Thank you.
We're going nowhere but up.
Thank you, and welcome to the community.
Thank you.
Next item is the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance approving the zoning reclassification of 5210 East Fowler Avenue, otherwise known as RZP 2203. I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who intends to speak on this matter to please stand for the oath, which will be administered by the city clerk.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you, God?
Very good. City attorney, would you please poll for ex parte communications?
If anyone here has had an ex parte communication, either written or oral concerning this matter, please state that now. Also state who that was with.
Don't think they can hear you in the gallery.
It's on. Strangely, it bends backward and not towards.
It doesn't work out of the top, it works out of the base.
Please state who the communication was with, when that took place, the sum and substance of that communication, and if it was a written communication, you should provide the, a copy of that to the clerk so that it may be kept in the record. And so if we can just go around and start with councilwoman?
No.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
Thank you.
Good. Senior Planner Gus Carpus will now explain.
Okay. So, again, what you have before you is the first public hearing and reading of an ordinance to approve a zoning reclassification request to rezone 1.08 acres of property located at 5210 East Fowler. The owner of the property is RMC USF Med LLC, and the applicant is Half Associates Incorporated. Again, it's to look to rezone the 1.08-acre lot, 5210 Fowler Avenue, from commercial office to commercial general, to make it consistent with the adjacent properties. The applicant also owns the property to the east, which is currently zoned commercial general. The existing use of the property located, okay, I'm sorry, the, there is a medical office building located on the site, which is considered a permitted use both on the commercial office zoning and the commercial general zoning. The subject property for the future land use is designated commercial, so it's zoned commercial office, but the future land use is commercial. And so if you take a look at the map here, everything around it is commercial general. I don't know how this was commercial office, but it's commercial office. So what the applicant is looking is to rezone that to commercial general, to make it consistent with everything else around it. So, again, there's a medical building, office building on the site, which, again, is permitted in both the commercial office and commercial general, so we're not doing anything special to keep that use. And the intent is to rezone the property to make it consistent with the runs around it and to permit flexibility in the permitted uses for future sale. There's not a specific purchaser at this time, and a conceptual plan has not been submitted. But under our ordinance zoning requests, other than PD, rezoning requests, other than PD, do not require a conceptual plan. Development Review Committee has looked at this application and had no objections. The Planning Commission did review the zoning reclassification application and has recommended approval, finding that it complies with the long-range planning goals surrounding neighborhood and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So staff recommends the city council approve the first reading of the ordinance approving the zoning reclassification, requesting a change to the zoning classification of the 1.08 acres of the property addressed as 5210 East Fowler, from commercial office to commercial general. That is it. And again, the applicant, Isabel, is here if you have any questions for her.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you very much. My name is Isabel Albert, I'm with Half Associates.
Did you tell us your last name again?
Sorry?
Your last name again?
Albert.
Okay, thank you.
Double L E, Albert. Yes, I mean, basically, this is a very simple request. The applicant, the owner of the property, also owns the property to the east, that's commercial general, looking all around, it's all commercial general, so it's not just for the future sale of the property, but it's for themselves also, if they wanted to redevelop the property and make it consistent with the rest of the corridor. And so therefore, this is why they're asking this request, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Very good, thank you, Mrs. Albert. So we'll take public comment, and then if there are questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. So are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Councilmembers, any questions for Mr. Carpus or the applicant? Go to this side first.
No.
Councilmember Schisler.
Other than just consistency, would this have bubbled up to our knowledge of this existing?
I'm sorry, Senator.
Other than the request of the applicant to become consistent with other properties, would this have bubbled up that we have an inconsistency in the individual properties as you went down the street?
I guess, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to follow that question, but I don't know that this would impact anything other than make it consistent. And then I did research on this property, and I couldn't find why it was zoned this way, but I guess I'm not really following.
I guess my question, my question really isn't germane to, it's leading to something else, so it's probably outside the purview of the public hearing, so I can wait till, I can ask this after.
Are you saying would this have other properties seeking the same thing?
No, but would this have bubbled up under normal circumstances that we have an inconsistency and somebody's set about to fix it? Other than the fact that the applicant, for some reason, noticed it.
Oh, yeah, we probably.
There'd be no proactive rezoning initiated by the city.
Yeah, the city wouldn't have done it on its own. The applicant would have, okay, now I understand.
That's fine.
Yeah, we wouldn't have taken a proactive step to rezone it because there's no reason for us to if the use is permitted.
Okay, that's fine.
Other questions, councilmembers? Any comments from the applicant? Okay, very good. So where are we here? So I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 1.08 plus-minus acres of real property addressed as 5210 East Fowler Avenue, portfolio number of 036861-000, from zoning classification commercial office to commercial general for RZP 22-03, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and appealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Good, thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Move to approve on first public hearing and reading the ordinance approving the zoning reclassification of 5210 East Fowler Avenue, RZP 22-03.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. The ordinance is adopted on first reading and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. Thank you, ma'am.
You then?
Next item is the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance amending Section 12-234 of the Code Regarding Maximum Permitted Floor Area Allowed for Laundry Establishments. I will open the public hearing and ask senior planner Gus Carpus to explain.
Okay, so you have tonight before you is a first public hearing and reading of an ordinance for land development code text amendment. It's for an amendment of Section 12-234 as it relates to the maximum permitted floor area allowed for the use of a laundry establishment within the commercial general zoning district. So this is kind of what my staff report said, is the community development staff was approached by a property owner seeking to lease space to a potential tenant who would like to open a coin-operated laundromat, dry cleaner facility. This use is currently permitted as a conditional use within the commercial general zoning district, but has a size limitation of 2,000 square foot. The applicant's leasable space is just over 3,700 square foot and is requesting the city council consider an ordinance amendment, increasing the maximum permitted floor area for the use within the commercial general zoning area to 4,000 square foot to accommodate the potential tenant. And so what I've done here is show what the ordinance would look like if it was changed, so you have the existing ordinance, and then the proposed ordinance shows the change, basically striking out the 2,000 and adding the 4,000, and then how the ordinance would read. So I did, I did review this, the language, and then I felt community development staff is not supportive of the proposed text amendment. The ordinance language as written does not prohibit the stated use, it just limits the allowable size in which it can be conducted. A change in the ordinance like this would not only impact the applicant's tenant space, but all tenant space and lots within the city that are zoned commercial general, including those within the community redevelopment and downtown overlay districts, which goes against the intended pedestrian-oriented use of those locales. Now, you'll notice that your packet does include an ordinance, and that ordinance is there in case you supported the ordinance and we're going to go against staff's recommendation. But this is the first reading of the ordinance, and if, I believe, and the city attorney could speak, if you're not supportive of the ordinance, then that ordinance does not go, and we would have to issue a resolution stating that the ordinance request fails, correct?
Yes, and you'd have to wait 21 days in order to get a chance to appeal, but before the end of 60 days.
They can't hear you.
We would have to do a.
Okay, we're good.
Do a resolution stating the reasons why it was denied. Also, we believe that our code would require that this also be sent to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation as well, and should probably be done, if you're supportive of this, we would go ahead and do that, and then essentially have a first reading and a second reading after that.
Okay, so I got a little distracted by the microphone. Let me clarify, just so everybody knows, if I, if we are in favor of this, then we would vote in favor of it, and it would then need to go to the Planning Commission for review, and then it would come back to us at a future time after their review.
Correct.
If the council tonight is not in favor of it, is where I'm a little fuzzy, because typically motions are made in the positive, and if you don't support something, it just dies for lack of emotion. So what would be expected of us in the event that the council was not supportive of it?
In the event you're not supportive of it, then I guess you could either, it would die for lack of a second, or you could go ahead, and this is what I would recommend, is go ahead and second it for purposes of discussion. From that discussion, I hope that we would be able to glean what the reasons are for either an approval or a denial, and then after 21 days, the legal department, along with Mr. Carpus, we would prepare a resolution for you, and it has to be done within 60 days, and it would state the reasons for denial. If you, if you approve it, then we don't need to do the resolution. I would hope that your approval would just be a recommendation that it go on to the Planning Commission.
So, in this case, if the council did not want to approve it, you're advising us that we should, somebody should still make a motion to approve it, and second that, so we can put on the record the reasons why we're going to vote that motion down?
Correct.
That doesn't seem, okay, that's just to document the particular reasons, is that?
Yes, because we have to have a resolution stating the reasons for denial, and unless I hear something from you, I don't know what those reasons are that you chose to deny it.
And discussion is not enough to memorialize those reasons?
No, you would have the discussion.
No, 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 I mean prior to a. I mean, prior to a motion, if.
Prior to a motion? Well, generally, you don't get into the discussion until the motion's been made.
Okay.
So.
So I see that, is the applicant here?
Yep.
Okay.
The applicant is here.
Aye. Good evening.
My name is Aruna Benwakasia.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm sorry, my English is not that much good. Actually, what happened, I have this long time dry cleaner and laundromat. In coronavirus time, you know, the dry cleaning business is dead. Still, everything is over there, but tenant is gone and I closed place. And now I looking some good tenant, look nice and make beautiful temple terrace. I find out one big company, they're making laundromat, and they show me all plant and everything. He say I making like this, beautiful, and I say here is now city location, so they show me everything. I have in my phone too. And after say, okay, I can sign lease, and I come here city office, and they say code is changed. My building is 30, 36,000, not 4,000. And he say code is like you can do, use only for 2,000 square feet. But he say I'm making big like this, they're not possible to fix in 2,000 square feet. So I need whole building.
I see.
I just request city, please, good tenant, they're making very nice, beautiful city. And backside neighborhood, when my dry clinic business gone, and I talk to, please support the many years this business here. He say now you can bring laundromat, I can help you, because I'm not going office, so many people working from home, so many bank here close, the dry clinic business is, you know, right now, dead. So why I decide I can rent like laundromat and dry clinic together.
Very good.
I can serve, I, I just request, you can give permission.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. So we will take public comment now, and then after that, if the council members have any questions of you, they may ask you to come back up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for everybody's.
Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. Council members, questions for Mr. Carpus or the petitioner?
Well, I, my question is.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Should we have this discussion after we make a motion so that?
Well, this is the time for questions, not discussions.
Okay, I don't have, well, I guess I do have a question.
Okay.
And that is, is this something that a property owner could actually get a variance for a one-time use?
No, because it's, it's a use, and so the variance deals with the dimensional requirements and not a use. You can't issue a variance for a use.
That's my question.
Other question? Councilmember Vice Chair.
Thank you. Do you know how long this 2,000 square foot requirement has been in there?
I tried to research that and I couldn't find that either. Usually, when I come up here, I try to research and get that information. I could not find that.
Do you know if 2,000 is consistent with other areas? I mean, since we don't know when it happened and why someone thought of 2,000?
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking. They had to find that number somewhere to put it in the ordinance, but I could not find that. I know we do have another laundromat next to Armada Games, but I couldn't really judge the size. It looks like it's larger than 2,000 square foot, but I wouldn't bet my life on it. I didn't measure it out exactly.
Do we know how many laundromats we have in the city?
I believe that's the only one right now.
No.
Is there two? Where's the other one?
Down here at, next to Dairy Queen, near Dairy Queen and then one up on 127th?
Okay, so that one I.
The old bike start.
The one I looked at is by Dairy Queen.
Okay.
Is that by one, WinPixie?
I didn't know of that one either. Okay. So I did not measure those, but see, they should have gotten conditional use permits, so I didn't.
You head the floor.
I'm done with questions. Thank you.
Questions? Councilmember Schisler.
What, can you give me an example of a 2,000 square foot building? Because you know I'm going to ask, give me one for a 4,000 square foot building, too.
I mean, you would figure 20 by, 20 by 100. I mean, that's really not that, it's really not that big.
Okay, what about a 4,000? Give me an idea, what's, what's the structure that we have that's 4,000? You think any off the top of your head?
CVSs are 10.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so. Okay, all right.
That's a good question. I should have came with that. Apologize.
Other questions? Councilmembers?
I do.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Are there other uses that we have size restrictions on in Commercial General?
I did not see, I did not see anything. I mean, I wasn't looking for it specifically, but I've never run across it before. But there may be as the conditional use, but this is the only one that stuck out because I was looking at this. It hasn't come up through my planning up to this point.
So I guess, I'm, I would like to know also, maybe some of the thought process behind establishing a particular size for a laundromat as opposed to other uses. It doesn't really, it doesn't necessarily make sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was trying to figure that, I mean, if you look at 20-foot and then, you know, how far is your washer? How far is your, I mean, deep, is it three feet, three feet, and then aisle? I mean, that seems kind of narrow, and then how many washers can you get in that and the restrooms? And, yeah, I mean, it seems pretty small, but I don't know why they created that, you know, I could not find that.
City Manager?
Your Honor, Mr. Carpus, could, could you just clarify? So if it, if there's a conditional use, am I fair to say that that, that's a use, that you can have a use by right? You can have a conditional use. A conditional use is because somewhere the community identified that this use may be okay, but under certain conditions. So it's, there's a concern about the use. I imagine that there might be, I'm not sure, but there might be other square footage limitations as part of conditional uses for other categories potentially.
Correct. Like I said, I haven't run across them.
But there might be, and I don't, I'm not sure if there are or not, but it's just important to remember, when there's a conditional use, their, their criteria have been established. So because the community, again, has said, we're not comfortable with this use by right. And it could be in this instance, which you mentioned in your report, the notion of pedestrian-oriented community, laundromats, I'm not saying this specific laundromat, and this may be a different type of laundromat, but historically are places where people, you know, you go, you got your laundry, you may be on your last shirt, you're going to go get your clothes washed, you stay there, watch, watch, watch the laundry being washed, and then you go home. It's not the kind of multiplier effect you expect in downtown. And I imagine that may have been part of the reason why this limitation was put in. Can't say for certain, but logically, that's probably what it came up, because again, if you, if you had a different type of business, you might go there, you might go shopping, you might go to a restaurant, et cetera, do those things, and that adds to the downtown environment and experience, which this may not.
And I think that's kind of what I was trying to get at, where we're looking at, especially with the downtown, we're looking at a pedestrian-oriented type business base.
All right, let's, let's just make sure that we're still on questions, because we're going to get into the discussion. I don't want to stray. We're, we're starting a segue. I don't want to do that yet. So any other questions? Okay, prior to closing the hearing, would the petitioner like to make any other statements? You get the final word.
I not understand what did you say, sorry.
I'm sorry, see?
I not understand what you say.
Oh, I just wanted to know if you had any other final comments before we close the hearing.
No, I just request, like, long time they have a dry clinic and laundromat, and same thing like Corona time I close, and now I have to open again. Yet I have to leasing some people, you know, right now have a still all equipment and everything is in this place. I just request, give me permission.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, I will close the hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Section 12-234 of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances by increasing the maximum floor area allowed for use as a laundry establishment from 2,000 feet, square feet to 4,000 square feet within the Commercial General Regulations, providing for applicability and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now, I think everybody heard the city attorney. We, we need a motion, we almost need a motion, whether you're wanting to vote in favor of your own motion or not.
Right. So I guess I'll, I'll move the first public hearing and first reading of the ordinance amending Section 12-234 of the Code Regarding Maximum Permitted Floor Area Allowed for Laundry Establishments.
So you're moving approval?
Well, yes, moving approval.
I'll second for discussion.
Yes.
Motion and a second for discussion. Okay, council members, I'll let you start.
I, I'm not in favor of this, and the reason is I'm not in favor of making the change across all of the Commercial General. It would be one thing if it was a one-time conditional use, but I don't think that it is, I, I agree with staff's recommendation, that I don't think it's consistent with what we are trying to do in that section, so.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Abel, you seconded it. Would you like to comment?
Yes, I'm concerned about the pedestrian-oriented structure that we've discussed, that we've heard about. I also feel as though it, it doesn't add, add to the downtown businesses. It's such a large thing to have in a downtown area, and I would be concerned about the implications of changing the ordinance for other businesses. So I'm not in favor of it as well. That's all.
Thank you, council member. Vice Mayor, anything?
No, just, just what they said. I can't see changing everything throughout the city.
Mr. Schisler?
My concern also, the conditional use issues is brought up by the city manager. I don't believe that it's consistent with what we're trying to, to develop and to promote within the city, so I'm not in support of it.
Okay. Very good, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion fails. Good. Okay, so I would like to say something to the petitioner here. I, I don't, I want to make sure that you understand our feelings here. We value your business. We want you here in Temple Terrace. We're just concerned about changing the rules throughout the entire city in order to make you be able to fit into this one particular space. So we are very hopeful that you can find a space that is 2,000 square feet and reopen your business within the City of Temple Terrace. We welcome you. We'd love to have you here. We're just concerned about the impact, because if we amended this, it would take place citywide. We don't have a mechanism to approve this particular application without it also impacting the entire city. And we're reluctant to want to change the rules for the whole city, just for the additional 1,700 feet that you need, so.
Because they're building in a long time their business.
I understand.
This business is in long time.
Yep.
And right now is still everything inside and everything, just Corona time close.
Well, maybe they can, maybe they can split it.
You know, if you eye somebody's lease like 2,000 square feet, left behind 1,500, how can divide 1,500 and how can do? And plus, when like small place, not coming good tenant. Why, I just request, maybe city need good presentation, if you need like plan and everything, I show you, how it's look like this nice place and.
I'll have to refer you to Mr. Carpus for that, but I didn't want you to feel like you're not welcome or appreciated, your business is not wanted here. It is. It's just we're, we don't want to change the rules for the whole city. So thank you for being here, ma'am. Okay, carryover council business from previous meetings? Any carryover council members? Councilmember Fernandez.
I just want to clarify the topics that I brought up at the last meeting regarding history projects, et cetera. I'm not suggesting that we reinvent anything or that we do something that another group may already be doing. I don't know what other groups are doing. I, that's, that's the whole point. I don't know what efforts are that are going on in the background. My, my request is really to see about maybe creating some sort of, of structure that, that we know what, what projects we have going on or what, and I'll bring, I'll be bringing this up at the goal setting, but it's not, I'm not suggesting that, oh, we should do whatever and then, oh, well, this other group is already doing that. I'm suggesting that we look at maybe a more comprehensive plan of what's going on and try to be a little more organized about it. And if we can do that, now is the time, if we want help from any kind of student that might be wanting to look, might be interested in taking on a project that would fit within our structure, because now's the time when the professor would be building that curriculum or that coursework to advertise it to students for them to take a project in the fall. So it's not, I'm not suggesting that anybody duplicate efforts. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Okay, so.
And I'll bring it up at the goal setting session for us to discuss, but I just wanted to be clear, because I know after the meeting, some people went to city staff and said, you know, well, we're already doing this or we're already doing that. I'm not suggesting we, we duplicate it.
Okay. But we're always.
It's more a question of what are we doing?
Okay. Well, we're always looking for ways to improve, so it's good discussion to have. Other carryover council business? Councilmembers? I have one thing. So for those of you involved in Mr. Bea's hiring, you might, but you weren't here for that. So Mr. Bea has been here six months now, and in his contract, there is a clause that recommends that council members meet with him once he has been here six months for an informal performance review. This is not a formal written performance review like we will do in September for all three charter officers. This is a optional, six months, how's it going? What would you like to see more of? What would you like to, you know, how's everything? So that, if you desire to do that, should take place during the month of March. Of course, I know a lot of that goes on, on a regular basis, but that discussion should be made during the month of March. If you are interested in doing that, please contact Mr. Bea, set up an appointment, and that is in the contract, so. All right, any other carryover council business? Okay, next, new business in board reports. New business in board reports?
I do.
Oh, I'm, I didn't know. I don't know if you're, you got to tell me.
Sorry.
Okay, councilmember Fernandez.
I went to the meeting of the Cultural Asset Commission for Hillsborough County, and I want to just bring back to the public that they, this committee, or this commission offers grants that are funded by Hillsborough County, and the grants are for projects or events that enhance cultural, the asset delineation of the, like, historical assets, community assets, and cultural aspects. So if we have an event, if somebody in the city is planning an event that may fit into that area, one of those areas, artistic, multicultural, historical, something that showcases assets in a community, that, that event might qualify for a grant from this commission. And the grant cycle just ended for the, I think they fund twice a year. This might, this was my first meeting. So the first grant cycle just ended. The next grant cycle will be happening in the summer, and I believe we'll be voting on those in August. So I'm, I just want to encourage anybody who's in the community who might be involved, whether your event is in Temple Terrace or in Hillsborough County, anywhere, encourage you to research and, and look at that. And.
at that and see if maybe your event would qualify. That's it.
Good. Thank you, councilmember. Yeah, the Arts Council got funding for that.
We did, yeah, and we've applied again.
Have you? Good, good. But yeah, that's good. It's available for other. Yep. Other new business, board reports. I have two things. One's on the agenda, one's not, so let me cover the not. So councilmembers, Moffitt Cancer Center is expanding their operations, and they are establishing a new bioengineering department, and part of this, their budget for this is $24 million. Most of it is either their own money or is being put together through philanthropy. They are working with Congresswoman Laurel Lee to secure $2.4 million as a federal component of this $24 million package. It's a pretty small component overall, but this $2.4 million request is to fund high-resolution or high-precision microscopes, like cutting-edge, some type of cutting-edge, super-secret microscopes that can see whatever. That's what the $2.4 million request is. I've been requested to support their request with Council, with Congresswoman Lee, which I intend to do individually. What I'm asking for your permission is to do that on behalf of the city, which obviously would carry a lot more weight. And so with your permission, I would like to support this request of Moffitt. They're in our backyard. This is obviously a wonderful thing, their expansion, expiration of cancer treatment is obviously a good thing. So I have the packet. I might be able to answer by looking at this, any particular questions you might have about it. There's a lot of medical stuff in here that I quite honestly don't understand all of it, but I can look for answers of any questions you might have.
Do you need a motion or a simple yes?
Yeah, I just, I don't need a resolution. I just, yeah, probably a motion would be good for you to empower me to, I mean, I can support this on my own, but who cares what Andy says, right? I really want to support this on behalf of the city.
I think a formal vote by the city, formal notification, formal res, all right, don't call it a resolution, but formal notification to the public that we aren't supporting this and that we, we're looking for help from Senator, from Representative Lee. That would go a long way, I think.
If, well, if you, somebody would, if you guys choose to, if you'll give me that authority, I will do this, but I need your authority to do so. Councilmember Abel?
Are you suggesting you write a letter or something expressing the council's support? Or what do you mean?
Well, they probably want a letter. I might follow up with, I mean, I do see Congresswoman Lee, so I'll probably follow up with a phone call or email or visit or something in addition to the letter, but, but I can't support this on behalf of the city without.
Make a motion that the city council support the request from Moffitt and appoint you as our lead person.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Motion carries, and I will do that and bring you back any news that I get. The second item is on the agenda, and that is there are identical bills that have been filed in the state legislature. The one I have in front of me is House Bill 975. The Senate bill, I don't remember the number of, but I sent it to you. They're identical. They have been filed. They have been assigned to subcommittees. They are snaking their way through the process. From what I can tell, there's a very good chance that they will pass, and what these bills would do is prohibit any county or city within the state of Florida from prohibiting private trash haulers from bidding on commercial or multifamily trash hauling. So as you know, the city of Temple Terrace, we do prohibit that. The city provides all the solid waste services here, and it's imperative that we continue to do so because our enterprise fund, as you know, we've had some challenges with that, and to disrupt our, our plans for this fund and our operations in public works would be potentially catastrophic for us. There are people who might say, well, yeah, but you're depriving the business owners of being able to get a better rate through private haulers because of competition. However, if you compare our rates that the city's established with the rates of surrounding area, which is not easy to do, by the way, because the private haulers won't just give you their rate schedule. It's not easy to get that. They want all kinds of information to make an individual. It's tricky. But if you do get that and you go to businesses in unincorporated county or in the city of Tampa, and you ask them, well, what do you pay for, you know, a six-yard dumpster with three times a week, and you'll find that we're very comparable. But to take the commercial and the multifamily aspect out of our sanitation fund would almost certainly dramatically increase the residential cost, the cost of residential service for our residents. So I'm, again, I'm asking for the council to empower me to be in opposition to this, but I can't do that on my own. I need, I mean, I can't speak for the city unless you empower me to do that.
So the main cost, so the cost of our waste disposal is the employees, the physical property of the trucks, and the tipping fees. The truck cost would be the same, private or public. I mean, maybe, maybe they'd be able to get a better price on a truck, I don't know, but the truck costs what it costs. The tipping fees, that is negotiated with, in this case, Hillsborough County. Would a private entity be able to have a less expensive tipping fee than the city?
I don't know the answer to that. Mr. LeBlanc, do you know the answer to that? You mind sharing it with us?
Good evening. That's a really good question. Here's why, and it's public information. I had an informal discussion with Hillsborough County about this last week. We go out to the tipping rates that the city pays, municipality rate is $10 less per ton than they charge anybody else. So the main question would be, which the discussion I had with the county is, okay, where are they going to go with the garbage? That doesn't seem to be something anybody knows right now. For instance, we pay $81.35 a ton now at the six Covanta sites. Well, Waste Management Republic, they pay $10 more per ton. We also have an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County that has, it started in 1998, was renewed in 2008. It's got 2028 expiration debt requires us, the county empowers us to collect everything within the city limits and bring it to them as a guarantee for that rate. They don't really know what that would come into play either. There are six county sites that accept that solid waste. There's McKay Bay, so unless everybody decides to up their rates and open, I don't know where they would, that's a very good question. It's unanswered. I don't think it's an issue we should just throw cold water on and walk away from. The county did not elaborate, but they didn't seem to be overly concerned.
Well, they might not be overly concerned because they already operate under the model that's about to be imposed on us, so they have no reason to be overly concerned. We're the ones that have the reason.
Yeah, and what that, I, we don't know, we just had a different type of material. We just had a disposal site closed, so something is probably lurking out there for, if I'm charging $60 a month and this guy's doing it for 40, the final destination is unknown. Don't know that. We, it's, it's right there. It's $10 a ton less that we get for being part of the interlocal agreement.
Does that answer your question?
It does. And what I'm, where I'm going with this is that, as a general rule, I don't like a government monopoly, and I think that everybody is served by competition. At the same time, what it seems like is that, because we're very conservative with how we have set our pricing, there are only three components that factor in here. You've got the cost of employees, which they, they caught, the market dictates what they'll be willing to work for. You've got the cost of the equipment, which is a pretty standard cost in the market, and then you've got the tipping fees, you have to dispose of it somewhere. So I don't, I don't think that we are excessive in our, in our pricing, even though we don't technically have a, we don't have competition, but I go back to the conversations consistently on my previous eight years and in between, and that is the residents of Temple Terrace like the disposal service they have right now. And, and it's come up many times that we might outsource it somewhere or, or make a different choice, and, and the residents have overwhelmingly said they don't want a different choice. And if we're saying that the, the commercial piece basically helps subsidize the full amount, then that's not a good idea. So that's it.
They're after the commercial. Nobody wants, nobody wants the residential now, like in Hillsborough County. They have, I believe, three service providers. They have to service the residential in order to be licensed for the commercial.
But the commercial helps us with the cash flow and the cost of the equipment, et cetera, to help provide the service that the residents want.
It's a subsidy anywhere, and, and what this would be, say, for the sake of discussion, that it moves through, it's just a segue, you know, we're operating on a scale this big. These corporations, which I've been a part of before, operate on a scale this big, so they can lose money in Temple Terrace, and they could make a 34% profit margin in Tempe, Arizona. We're looking at ourselves, they're looking at everything. I think that's the driving factor and some special interest to get, you know, what you, you put your foot in the door and then you just kick it down after you're there. Nobody wants the residential unless they have to.
Councilmember Schisler, and then Vice Mayor.
I think what we need to do is to work within the confines of the legislature right now. They're working on this. We need to give the mayor the authority to, to speak on our behalf and to lobby on our behalf to, and we should each do the same thing. We should, we should, every one of us should be lobbying to maintain this, this home rule issue, if we can. I know I intend to on a personal basis, and I think that we should do it as a, as a, much like we did with Moffitt, as a joint communication from the city. This is what, you know, we want this to stay the way it is. On the other hand, I too don't like municipal monopolies, but if we build the better mou, the best mousetrap, then people will stay with us in the long run. Costs, cost accounting, you can do whatever you want with cost accounting. We can subdivide it however, you know, a thousand different ways. So, you know, the numbers work, but in the interim, we need to make sure that, you know, we need to come up with some potential scenarios as to what the impact would be going forward. So I think we need to move forward, give the mayor, we should each, again, like I said, each lobby, our representatives and everybody in general, there's conduits to through it through the Florida League of Cities to work against these proposals. But, you know, and then we need to look at ourselves and make sure we got the best mousetrap that we can have so that people are going to want to stay with what we've got, and just let everybody know that this is not residential. This, because residential, as, as Councilmember Fernandez said, that gets people excited and concerned. It is commercial, but yeah, they, everybody, we're all symbiotic, and we all work together to, to manage the overall costs. So I think we should go forward and definitely work against the bill.
Vice Mayor?
Some, some questions, and I support what is being said on supporting the, supporting the disapproval of this. Sorry. But some questions. So if this passed, and I don't know if I'm asking over here or here, if this passed, we could conceivably have 10, 20, 30 different companies driving through our city, picking up.
It's unlikely you'd have that many, but you'd have more than one.
You'd have more than one, okay. Currently, if a commercial truck goes to a dumpster to pick up, our truck, and they see the doors broken or something wrong with the containing site or something like that, do they report it, or is that just our code people?
No, no, we, we, we report it. We have a, we, we spend now about $15,000 a year on little commercial dumpsters, the little green ones, on replenishment, replacement, maybe closer to $20,000. That's all handled in-house. It's actually part of the code that we maintain the dumpster in a sanitary condition, you know.
Not just the dumpster, the, the enclosure that the business is supposed to, if our truck pulls up and sees the enclosure's broken, been hit by a car, or the door's off, do your guys report that?
Yes.
Through code, or?
No, we, well, internally, depending on what it is, we'll notify. We had one the other day that we found that way over the weekend. Somebody drove into.
Though conceivably, a private company wouldn't do that, and that would fall on our code people.
Yeah, they don't, they don't.
There's a lot of reasons I think we need to oppose this, so.
Councilmember Abel?
The way I see it, this is, it'll be a slippery slope. You know, it starts with, if this passes, it starts with one commercial entity hiring a private company, and then maybe more will do that, and then eventually, it could happen that we, we lose our commercial clients, and then the next thing is rates will rise for us, and when rates rise for us, our sanitation department becomes less sustainable itself. And like what other council members have said, that's not what our residents want. We like the level of service. We like the quality that we have with, with what we currently have, and we like the proximity of it. We like that it's close by. It's our, it's our local sanitation department. So I support you. I'd like to see this, this letter written, and I will also advocate on behalf of this. So thanks for bringing it up.
Well, thank you, counsel. Just a couple final thoughts that have come up during discussion, too. If, if we start losing our commercial accounts, the residential rates will increase. We just hit our residents with a 10% increase in this fiscal year to try to turn the trend of the sanitation fund. We are still a long ways away from our goal of having a 25% fund. We're only, probably going to approach 10 or 11% with the 10% increase that we imposed. There's, this year, if nothing changes, there's probably another 10% increase coming in this next budget, and those increases that we, as we've told the public, are probably going to increase if nothing changes, but so that we can get that sanitation enterprise fund up to where it needs to be. So we're already facing increases that we can't control. The tipping fees are beyond our control. If this passes and we start losing our commercial accounts, that's going to significantly exasperate that problem so that the residents of our city, instead of being faced with multiple years of 8 and 10% increases, they're going to be faced with some serious increases if we're going to keep this thing afloat. This is just like insurance. Everybody wants to write car insurance. Nobody wants to write homeowners, and this is the same thing. They want to take the part of the industry that's. They want to take the part of the industry that's most profitable, the commercial, and leave you with the part that's the losing proposition, the residential. Right now, we have a balance to kind of work this out so that it's affordable for everybody, but if we lose the, the good part of this and we're left with the expensive part, we're in trouble. And I don't mean the five of us, I mean the 27,000 of them. And so I think this is really important. Now, whether we can have any impact or not, I don't know, but I sure want to try. So, is, is there a motion?
The move that we, uh, allow the mayor to advocate in opposition to the HB 975 and SB 798.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I could offer a final comment.
Yes.
Mr. Ingham. Mr. Bass. Bass, might be a, might be a time to do some what-ifs going forward. You do it at a 10,000-foot level. It doesn't have to be myopic, but give us an idea of what we could be looking at as we come onto goal-setting and so forth. I'll be glad to help with it if we could, if you need.
We're going to have to do that because if this bill truly has legs, like it sounds like it might.
Yeah.
We have to be prepared for those scenarios.
Yep.
Call me.
And its effective date is this July.
I know. Yes. And the fact that there's identical bills, that usually signals that there's, that it has legs.
Yeah.
So this has got a lot of mayors very concerned, particularly the smaller cities like us, so. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Any other new business or board reports? I'm sorry I took so much time. Are there other new business or board reports? If not, city managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just at the last council meeting, we had two residents that came up with some concerns about the Live Oak St. Augustine water main replacement project. Since that time, I want to commend Troy Tinch and his staff for, uh, working to get information out to the residents, so every, every impacted property owner has, should have received a letter by now. We also made sure that the people that might be renting properties were notified by doorhangers, uh, and we've scheduled a public meeting tomorrow night, Wednesday, March 8th, at our Public Works Building. It's across the street from the City Hall parking lot, and it's from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. We encourage anyone from the community, particularly those impacted, to, to attend. We will have, uh, members of the city team, the contractor and the project engineer, uh, at the, uh, at the, at the gathering, and be able to talk to folks about what this might mean for their individual properties going forward. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bea. Any questions for the city manager? Thank you, Mr. Bea. City attorneys report.
I have nothing.
Okay. Councilmembers, anything else? Anything else? Directors, anything? Okay, it's going once. You just, you just want to go home, right? Would you bang the gavel and let me go home? We will be adjourned. Thank you.